To the existing roadways to meet the needs of our new community. At the same time, we're trying to meet the same needs of maintenance of the existing county while growth happens. So we want everybody in the county to receive the same high level of services we provide, whether you're two years old or you're 80 years old.
We've got an amazing Public Works department that's working very diligently to provide what our citizens need, what our tourists need, what our future citizens need. So whether it be roads and bridges, or it be improvements to our beaches and our recreational facilities, we're working very hard. We just opened up a new bridge on 44th Avenue. That was something that this community saw decades ago as a need, as a reliever for two other east-west thoroughfares. And once that crosses over Interstate 75, we're going to see the ability for a contiguous road going from the beaches where we're standing today, all the way out to Laker Ranch and beyond where the new growth center is in Manatee County. One of the things that we've lacked putting funding towards recently is our north-south thoroughfares. So Fort Hamer Road is our number one priority, both on the state level and federal level. Once complete, it's going to go all the way from Hillsborough County to the north of us, all the way down to Sarasota County to the south of us, and create a major reliever, not only for the local roads here in Manatee County, but for the interstate as a whole, if there's ever an accident. So that's a major priority of our Public Works team right now. The second thing is we're starting to see more sidewalk projects, more complete streets, roundabouts, things that traffic calming, to really make sure that Manatee County is providing efficient ways to get around, but providing safe ways to get around.
This is not sleepy old Manatee County from 20 years ago. There is an expectation that we provide a high level of service, and people do it. We also do much, much more community outreach, try to have a true insight in a particular area on what the improvement is. Where can I do some extra sidewalk work? Where can I put some traffic calming amenities in? Where can I improve pedestrian safety? The vast majority of our employees live in Manatee County, and that is such a plus. They know the community. Sometimes they know the people that are requesting the work. We want people to take that pride into knowing that they are taking care of their own community.
And every groundbreaking I'm at, every ribbon cutting I'm at, Chad and his team are there. When we have our meetings, they're sitting in the audience. They're listening to our citizens. They're keeping in touch with what's needed in Manatee County, and making sure it's adhered to, to the best of their abilities at all times.
Our summer is our big time to be prepared for emergency events, and that's to be prepared for a hurricane. Our last two fun events had been around Hurricane Irma in 2017, and most recently, just last year, a near miss for us with Hurricane Ian to the south and Fort Myers in 2022.
We work endless hours throughout the year, making sure we're prepared for a storm. Preparation through sandbags, the equipment. We had over 100,000 sandbags given out in a day, day and a half. If there's a blockage or a dirty pipe, you know, all year round, we're cleaning them, we're opening up the ditches, so when all that water comes, it's got a way to go out instead of flooding homes and roads. And after the storms, Public Works is one of the first ones to respond, to clear the roadways and to clean up. I grew up in Manatee County, so seeing what we do every day, you know, is awesome.
Endless opportunities are available here. We're looking for many, many new bright young faces to come join us and build a career as this community continues to grow.
I've lived here my whole life, so it would be 20 years. When I learned about the internship in high school, I came and I started work here. My primary job is currently lift station rehabilitation projects. So going in, taking all the different parts of the lift station, taking the old parts out and replacing them with new parts. However, I also get to do fun projects, like some 3D modeling, 3D design, to be able to show to the public the projects that are going to be going in their local community. I've had great mentors and the management and everybody just supporting me. And on top of that, the tuition reimbursement through Manatee County has been able to help me pay for my classes, go to college at the same time, and work and gain skills that I'd be able to use in the future.
Manatee County has a career ladder. So as you come in, you start off as a trainee, not knowing anything Public Works does. And the more you learn and achieve, you can move to a Tech 1, Tech 2, Tech 3, and then a Senior Tech, which opens up more opportunities for promotions.
Growing up here, almost 26 years, born and raised, I had wanted to work for the county for a while. I came in here not knowing anything about spraying, or pesticide application and stuff like that. So I've learned the front-end loader, which is really fun. I get to play in the dirt. I got to do the forklift, so that's pretty cool as well. The chemical trucks that we get to operate with the tank and the hose that we use, the backpacks. Sometimes we get to use the ATV to get to smaller areas that the truck won't fit. It's really fun being out there in the field, and I've learned a lot when I've come in here. So I got my spray license and CDL, and I was glad to get in.
I chose Manatee County as my career. I was 19 years old, starting a family, so I needed something with great benefits, great hours, something I would enjoy for a long time coming. So Manatee County was the first option and last option. It worked out great.
You know, we encourage anyone who works in Manatee County to really consider living here within Manatee County, because we are all collectively working to make this a great place to live, work, and play. And, you know, anyone working for Public Works or our county as a whole is going to help facilitate that.
It is a beyond exciting time. Manatee County will be the premier place where the Skyway lands on the south side of Tampa Bay.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, and we're opening up a work session of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County. It is an absolutely beautiful day today in Manatee County, and we're going to start this one off normally by honoring God, and then by honoring our great nation. So today, we have Luke Stockland from First Baptist Bradenton Church is here to lead us in prayer, after which Marine Corps veteran and county commissioner Jason Bearden will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, if you're able, please stand.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, God, we acknowledge you here in our midst today. And God, I pray a special prayer of blessing and wisdom over all the decisions and discussion that is going to be had this morning. God, we, we need to be honest and, and open, even in our own minds and with one another, that none of us by ourselves have all the answers. And if we're truly being honest collectively, we still don't have all the answers. But it's a process of, of growing, learning, deciding, and carrying on the responsibility that you've laid before us. So God, we also acknowledge that you are the one with all the answers. And in your Holy Bible, in the Book of Proverbs, the Book of Wisdom, it says that the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom. And so since you are the author of all knowledge and wisdom, God, we acknowledge our desperate need to seek you, to have the wisdom that is needed to move our city forward and our county forward. God, we, we need your presence and we need your wisdom. So I pray your blessing over this meeting, and that you would be honored in all that is said and decided. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Moving right into our meeting here, we're going to start. Our first item is, falls under Public Works. It's a discussion on state legislative priorities. Every commissioner should have met with our lobbyists last week or the week before, and had this discussion and laid out, I think they brought around last year's list of priorities, and then a list where you could add as a draft any new priorities that you wanted, or at least highlight what you felt should be our top priorities. And so do we have Mrs. Stewart or Mr. Johnson on the line on Zoom at this time?
You did. We're here, Mr. Chair.
Perfect. I'll tell you what, Amanda, I'm going to go ahead and turn the meeting over to you at this point, if you want to go through how your individual meetings with commissioners went, and what you came out with as a potential list. Go ahead.
Absolutely. So a good morning, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do need you to introduce yourself for the record.
Sure. So I'm Amanda Stewart.
Jeff Johnston.
Johnston and Stewart, representing the county as part of your external government affairs team. And so we've had the opportunity, as the chairman just pointed out, to meet with each of the commissioners in the last few weeks, just to go over the priorities that each of you believe you're facing and that your county is facing, and to see how we might be able to best help craft an agenda for the upcoming session. And so we can go through in detail. Really, we want to start just kicking off the meeting by talking about, you know, that the, the one main note that we took away from every single one of our individual meetings was that infrastructure, infrastructure, roads, roads, transportation, transportation. I mean, it's the number 1 through 10 issues facing the county. And we know obviously that Manatee County is one of the fastest-growing, if not the fastest-growing county in the state. And the infrastructure is not, it's not enough for the current residency, and for those that we believe will be, you know, come moving in the future. So in this past legislative session, we were able to bring home a lot of money regarding a lot of different transportation projects, so we'll just quickly go through them. Fort Hamer, we were able to get funding for the bridge design and permitting. We were also able to get funding for the Fort Hamer Bridge four lane design. We had the MCAB Route 99 operation enhancements, Moccaswell-Wallow road expansion, 44th Avenue received funding, and then 51st Street West Extension received funding. So all of those received not total amount of funding, but a good chunk to get us started with. And it sounded like, to Jeff and I, from each of those conversations we had with each of the commissioners, that there's a desire to finish those road projects, and then also just take into consideration what we can be talking about with state agencies regarding future road projects and better transportation. So, you know, we, there was a couple of other issues that we talked about individually, and I'm happy to discuss them here, that didn't necessarily have a lot to do with transportation. So for example, Commissioner Satcher talked about Aaron's Law, and asked us to do some research about what that looks like. Something that, you know, is not a transportation issue, but 30 other states do that. So we're on a little bit of a fact-finding mission. Commissioner Ballard has, you know, some questions about Guardian Ad-Liteum and increasing funding for Guardian Ad-Liteum attorneys. You know, it's, she made so many great points about the, the work overload that they have, and what that looks like for them, and, you know, wanting to make sure that they're taken care of, but that also every other facet is taken care of for people who do really difficult work, for the children and the families in our communities. We talked about some environmental issues, and, you know, the fact that Manatee is, you know, on the water, and there's a lot of discussion about what that looks like, and how we create a safe environment for the county and for the residents there, and do it practically and thoughtfully. And so we had a good conversation about that. Some, let me see here, I'm going through my notes. Commissioner Ron talked about 911 callers, and what that, you know, the, the conversations that he's had about what the trauma and stress they encounter, and how they're not necessarily treated, for lack of a better term, after, you know, for the trauma and for the things that they go through. So we had some really robust conversation with each of the commissioners. You know, Commissioner Turner talked about, you know, just help walk me through what you've done in the past, and, you know, agreed that obviously, transportation and infrastructure are incredibly important, and was excited to hear that the other commissioners felt the same. So, you know, we had some really, really great conversations with each of them, with each of you, and we were grateful for it. But our recommendation obviously would be to consider, when we're talking about our funding projects, to consider certainly the two Fort Hamer projects. Obviously, Moccaswell-Wallow needs completion. So we would, we would encourage that the projects that we went for, the majority of them, that we went after for funding, that we continue that funding in this upcoming session. So I'll pause there, and we're happy to answer any questions. Jeff, do you have anything you want to add to that?
So did you, did you have a, a list of projects that all commissioners supported, or a, you know, a vast majority, maybe, I don't know, a six to one? I don't know, something like that, or sub zero that everybody supported?
I would say that there was not a commissioner that we spoke to that did not agree that the Fort Hamer projects were important. And when we went in Moccaswell-Wallow, obviously, when we talked about all of the projects that we funded last year, there was on a commissioner that said, well, I, I don't want to, you know, support Moccaswell-Wallow, or 44th Avenue, or the two Fort Hamer projects. So I would say certainly with those four, there was consensus.
I have Moccaswell-Wallow, Fort Hamer, and 44th. Oh, you're dividing 40, uh, Fort Hamer into two, is that correct?
We lobbed them into two different projects, yes. So the bridge design and permitting, and the bridge four lane design. So there's, I, I don't, we're not entirely sure from the county's perspective about how much funding is needed to complete both. If, if one of them is, you feel the design and permitting is already complete, then we can certainly just make that into one project.
I would say that as far as how much funding, there, it is an impossibility that you could get us enough for any of these three projects, four projects. And if you could, then you, you win lobbyist of the year. So I guess then the question would be, is there a target number, knowing that this would simply supplement these, you know, whatever we were able to get for any of these three would supplement the projects? Is there a target number that you recommend to the board?
And we talked about, you know, Chairman, in our meeting with you, we talked about how in, in a perfect world, we would ask for $10 million for each of these. I would say that we always want to be thoughtful, obviously. We know that you are fiscally conservative as a board, and we appreciate that, and it's easy to represent you in that way. But we also know that these roads take a lot of money, and these projects take a lot of money. So we feel comfortable asking the legislature to help us at those levels of $10 million. Obviously, with, you know, no guarantee, and, you know, we would never guarantee that we could be 100% successful, but we believe your delegation shares your concerns about roads and wants to help where they can. So we would suggest starting with that number, and if that number becomes less, or we have to ask for less, then that's what we'll do.
Okay, so 10 million for each is your recommendation. I mean, we have two commissioners on the board to speak, Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Ballard. Sir?
Yeah, I think these three projects, I guess we break them out into four, based on the, the bridge versus the road for Fort Hamer, are clearly the, the most important things going on in Manatee County relative to the infrastructure. It's what we focused on on the federal level, it's what we're focusing on at the state level. My question is, if we go at the 10 million level, just in terms of presentation, do we present it as we're looking for $10 million straight up? Or do we present it as we're looking for $10 million as some sort of a, a matching fund? And do we need to, or should we put money aside someplace to show a, a good faith match of some, some amount, whether it's the full dollar-for-dollar 10 million, or some portion of it, just so we can make sure we're assessing our CIP and our dollars?
Mr. Chairman, I, what I would say is, I, I, we always recommend that if there's a way to also include local funding, the state always appreciates that, right? That they appreciate the partnership, and knowing that there is skin in the game on all sides. So if there's a possibility of putting county funding to the side for these projects in future years, we would recommend that.
And then, separate, just because we were talking about some non-infrastructure stuff, just while I'm on the board, so I don't have to come back on again. Did you speak to Representative Kennedy relative to the Safe Harbor bill, or the Safe Haven bill that she ran last year? You were going to look in to see whether or not she was going to run it, now that she's kind of essentially Speaker-elect, possibly somewhere down the road? If that was a bill she was going to rerun, did you ask her about that?
Mr. Chair, you have incredible timing. We had a brief conversation in our meeting with her in about an hour and a half.
Okay. So you'll let, you'll let us know, or you'll let me know after you speak with her, just whether or not that's one of the bills she's planning on running?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard.
So obviously, I, I agree with, with our, our infrastructure focus. One, I had spoken with, with Amanda and Jeff about the, about the funding structure for our child welfare attorneys. We, previously, this board has, has lobbied on, on issues related to child welfare, and, and I do think it's important. So right now, our Guardian Ad-Liteum attorneys, starting out, make less than $50,000 a year. Our children's legal services attorneys make $52,000 a year, starting out. So we always talk about, you know, affordable housing, making sure that we have things that are available for, for the workforce. So these attorneys are making significantly less than the average teacher in Manatee County, and the workload is absolutely, I can tell you from experience, it, it's, it's ridiculous. So I do think it's a very worthwhile issue, maybe looking at a path to progression, or, or different, different steps for, for those attorneys, just so that there's, so that you can keep good attorneys around, and make sure that, you know, they, they see a path to progression, and not just feel stuck at, at a, at a low wage. There's one other issue that I actually had started looking into after, after we spoke, which was part of the Live Local Act, but didn't make it all the way through. And that was either a, it was a tax rebate for small landlords that were offering affordable rentals. So what actually ended up getting through in the Live Local Act was for people who were, you know, kind of creating larger developments, they were eligible for that tax rebate. But there was another part of the bill that didn't, didn't make it to the finish line last year, which offered those tax incentives for these small landlords that are providing affordable housing through our community. And I think that that's, that's a huge, that, that's something huge that a lot of these landlords are, are doing, and a lot of them find themselves kind of getting squeezed from every direction. So I think if we were able to, to push for, for that, that bill to be refiled, and to make it all the way to the finish line, I think that that could be a great incentive for, for some of the, the smaller landlords that are providing a lot of affordable housing throughout our community. And I think that's all I've got for now.
All right. So I have Fort Hamer times two, at 10 million each, Moccaswell-Wallow, 10 million, 44th Avenue, 10 million. Commissioner Ballard, how do you want to go about, I mean, I, I'm going to guess, not like I'm going out on a limb here, that you're going to get support for your child welfare initiative? The board has done it once before, I sort of led the charge on it the first time. I certainly support it. How do you want to structure that? Do you want to give us some kind of timeline where you can get with Jeff and Amanda, and then come back with language?
Sure, I'd, I'd be, I'd be happy to do that. Absolutely.
Does anyone object to Commissioner Ballard working with Jeff and Amanda, and coming back with language on a child welfare initiative at the state level? Okay. All right, you have the green light on that, then. And then what about Live Local? Does anyone object to supporting that bill? Okay, so then you have the green light on that as well. All right. Does anybody feel comfortable with where we are at this point? We're kind of keeping it short and sweet, but sometimes less is more, rather than throwing too much against the wall. As long as they get us more money than last year, right, we're happy. Jeff, Amanda, how do you two feel about this list as it stands?
Very comfortable. I think it's a good list. I think you guys are being really focused, and we'll have to look into the Live Local. The one question I have top of mind is, you know, what's the fiscal impact there? So we'll have to, we'll have to do a little bit of research to get those answers.
Okay.
But I think this is a good list.
Okay. Do you all have anything to add beyond that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Then no one else is on the board. Appreciate you, your time, and all that you're doing for the county. We'll move on then to item number two, which is under Utilities, Presentation on Comprehensive Plan Policy 2.1.1. 2.1.2.8, yeah. We all know which one it is here. Development East of the Future Development Area Boundary. We know what we're talking about. And who is here from staff to present?
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Nicole Knapp, interim director of Development Services. And behind me, you've got a few other staff members, Evan Pilochowski and Scott May may plan to present or answer questions, and Chatbotz is here as well. So, so this morning, we're here to discuss Comprehensive Plan Policy 2128, which is, as you're all aware, permits development east of the future development area boundary, so F dab, so we can shorten that. Under certain situations and with certain criteria that are met, the policy was approved almost two years ago now, November of 2021. And like any other new code or policy that's created, after you start to work with it and apply it to specific development that is applied for, you staff and your commissioners are all aware, we start to see the, the unintended consequences or nuances of certain words that maybe we need to refine the policy or code. So June 25th of this year, Commissioner Cruz, at one of your regular meetings, made a motion to actually have staff remove the language from the comp plan policy. That motion failed, and the discussion that day from the commissioners was, is that we should bring it back. The consensus was, to you in front of a workshop this morning, to discuss that item specifically, not associated with the comp plan update itself. So here we are today. Typically, when new language is, is adopted, or new policy in your comprehensive plan, shortly thereafter, you'll have an amendment to your land development code. That did not happen as of today. That, that typically, that language would have provided implementing language of the criteria of 2128, which is A through G, letters A through G, giving it more specifics of when certain criteria is met, when someone's, when a development's eligible, or, you know, for lack of a better term, more teeth. It's not been done yet, so the goal today would be to determine a desire to do that through the discussion and after the presentation. As we explained in our brief As we explained in our briefings, today's presentation is surrounding utilities. Roads in stormwater are easily, have easier controlling factors, if you will, when located outside the future development boundary area. But that's not the case with utilities. The biggest impact is to utilities outside of the F dab. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Evan to continue the slideshow.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Evan Piluchowski, Utilities Director for Manatee County. If we can jump to the next slide. So as Ms. Knapp stated, this is all about the utilities impacts of development outside of the F dab. She's absolutely right. The continual expansion east causes a lot of problems for utilities, just from a planning standpoint. So there's no easy way to take a pipe and add capacity to it. You have to add a second pipe as you move further east. So the FIFs are one of the tools that we need to use in order to have smart development, and so that we can plan properly for any development that is in the future. So quick FIF facility investment fee, just some background information about what it is. So it has two components. The first component is for the line extension, so the actual sewer mains, water mains for that part. And then there's a plant fee. So treatment capacity at the plants also is purchased with these facility investment fees. And we, as the county, do our planning and expansion to these facilities to accommodate future growth and have the capacity online when it's needed. The cost is shared proportionally, based on how much usage a development may have. So the more usage a development is going to be allocated, the more they pay into the county to offset the costs of the infrastructure that's been built ahead of their development. A lot of times, the county will actually work with the developers, especially on the line extensions, to make sure that the line extensions that are put in place not only serve the needs of a specific development, but also future users in that area, so that we don't need to go in, put in a parallel pipe, or even worse, tear out an existing pipe before its end of useful life, and put in a bigger pipe. And then the cost, there's a lot of factors. It's not a one-size-fits-all. It depends on water, wastewater service, meter size, whether it's residential, commercial, if they have a fire service, and then retail and wholesale. So there's a whole matrix of fees that are associated with these FIFs. So just a very, very quick example here. Starting below the line without FIFs, this is what development would look like. You have three developers in line. Each one of them would be responsible for building out the necessary water and sewer mains back to the treatment plants, and they would be responsible for also making the capacity improvements at the plants to basically pay their own way to have that capacity available to them. That's a very expensive way to go. You can see that there would be three parallel pipes in the same road. From the county's perspective, that causes problems with just space in the infrastructure, in the right of way, plus a higher ongoing operation and maintenance cost while we're having to maintain and operate parallel systems with a lot of inefficiencies there. So above the line with FIFs, this is the model that we really like to see. It allows us to plan the expansions of the treatment plants themselves proactively. We make sure we have the capacity online when it's needed. And then we make sure that each one of the developers, A, B, and C in this example, the water and sewer mains are built to a size that allows for the future development, so that we never have to go back and tear out a new water and sewer main. So here, it's a little busy slide, but what we're showing is the area inside the F dab. That was included in the FIF analysis that was performed in 2019. For that analysis, what we typically do is we look at the available capacity in the treatment plants, as well as in the water and sewer mains. So there's an excess capacity that is kind of spread across future developments. So all of the capacity that we have built out in the system is allocated out to effectively reduce the cost to development within the F dab below what it would cost to just build from scratch. So outside of the F dab, in that yellow area, there is no allocation based on that study from 2019. So any additional development, or any additional capacity we need to build in that yellow area, you have to assume that it's from scratch. So it's 100% of the cost for developing new capacity, both in transmission and in So here, you can see another factor. So what I had said in the last slide, you can kind of see that the cost of the FIFs inside the F dab versus outside the F dab are going to be two different numbers. It will be more expensive outside of the F dab. And then on top of that, it's more expensive. The further you get away from a treatment plant, the longer you have to pump it, the larger the pipes need to be. You're fighting gravity, especially in the water system. So it's not just that it's, they're building it from scratch. It's also more expensive to operate and construct the infrastructure the further you get from the treatment plants, which, outside the F dab, you are getting further away from the treatment plants. So the treatment plants themselves, just from a practical standpoint, there's really no way for a small development to come in and add that capacity to one of our treatment plants. It's much more efficient for the county to plan and do our expansions to treatment capacity. We do it in about a three to five million gallon a day increment. We have some efficiencies of scale there. If a smaller development came in, they needed, say, 100,000 gallons a day, practically, there's just no way to do that with expanding one of our treatment plants. So we really want to move away from that, and trying to build small, little incremental increases at our treatment plants, much better long-term for us from an operation and maintenance standpoint, to do these larger planned developments. And then the actual increases to the treatment plants are very expensive. I don't want to gloss over that. Each one of these expansions that we're talking about is going to be $100 million plus. Already, we have all three of our wastewater recovery facilities, or water recovery reclamation facilities, in the works. So those expansions are already in the works, as well as a new water source. So this is coming regardless of any direction, just based on the current projected growth that we're seeing here in the county. So what we're looking for from the board is some direction. As a first step, what we would really like to see is a study. We would like the board to give us direction on performing a study outside the F dab, to really put a finer point on how expensive will it really be to provide that additional treatment capacity, the additional conveyance, so that we can make sure that any future development that happens, the growth pays for growth. So that's the whole idea behind FIFs. And outside the F dab, that's a number we don't have a real fine point on right now. And the study that we're looking for direction on would allow us to get to that point. And then in addition, we are also looking to, it's more, a little bit more in the weeds, there's a water line extension FIF that we would be looking to establish. We have a model where we do it for sewer lines, but not for water lines. It's been very successful on sewer lines. We think that it would be beneficial, but we want to take a closer look at that and just make sure that there's no unintended consequences there, and then bring this information back to the board before taking any action. So with that, thank you, and any questions?
There is no one on the board with questions, Evan. Commissioner Cruz is on the board. Sir?
I mean, I don't think we can give you direction other than nods of the head, because it's a work session, not a special meeting, so we can't vote on having you actually move forward this, other than giving you the general concept. Your request on the last page was to conduct an FIF study solely for the area east of the F dab line, but we previously discussed how the total FIF study is outdated in its own right, in some cases pretty substantially. Why wouldn't we just do an FIF study? And then, when the consultant's reviewing the study, they're focusing east of the F dab as a separate area. Why would we hire a consultant and probably pay 90% of the cost and 90% of the time for one little area with limited use, when for a nominal additional cost, we can reset this study with updated information?
So the FIF study itself was performed in 2019. It has a five-year shelf life, so we do have a little bit of time left on it. We also brought this to the board to get direction on performing an updated FIF study several months ago, and did not receive any direction to move forward, so therefore, we're not asking you to reconsider. We just are looking at a different area for, an area we do not have an FIF established currently.
Understood. And I recall that, it was back in April, we tried to move it forward. But my point is, in this case, if we're going to hire a consultant anyway, maybe it's a different story then, because I hear what you're saying, it's 2019, you know? But still, it's 2023, end of 2023 now. By the time, how long would a study like this take? Six months? Nine months?
Three to six months.
Three to six months, okay. So we'd still be into 2024. We'd be at the early part of the five-year window of obsolescence relative to a study. You know, could we sit around for six months, 12 months, 18 months with the existing study and deem it to be relatively recent? Sure, but not that much, not that recent. So the reality is, it's close enough. If we're going to hire a consultant, they're going to do the work, they're going to analyze your numbers, then why not spend the extra few bucks and get the full study done and just be ahead of a study for a change? It would still be at the five-year window. But then it starts a whole new five-year clock, and then, you know, we're looking at 2029 before we need to focus on this again. So I was just curious what the reasoning was. I hear what you're saying, you know, relative to trying to get something done, as opposed to nothing done. But in my mind, if we're going to hire a consultant and pay them and go through the three to six months, plus discussions on the board, plus public hearings, plus everything else, you might as well just do the whole thing, so we can reset a clock and stop focusing on this for a while.
I don't have anyone else on the board. Did you have any other staff that you wanted to bring forward to present? Okay.
No, sir.
All right, then I'm going to open this up to public comment. We also did, we also had our legislative priorities. So if people want to come up to this, oh wait, hold on, Commissioner Ballard wants to speak now.
I just have a question. Since this is just a work session, and obviously, we can't vote on whether to move forward with an FIF study, are you going to bring this to a meeting for a vote in upcoming weeks?
Yes, that's the intention.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we also discussed our state legislative priorities. So if anyone wants to come, because I think most people are here to probably comment on this item. So if anyone would like to come forward for public comment to address the board on items one or two, and I'll open it up for number three after we hold item number three. But if anyone would like to come forward and address the board on items one or two from today's workshop, please come forward. And ma'am, when you reach the podium, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to address the board on items one or two on today's agenda.
Stella Burnett, County Manatee. My ex-husband's father is back there on the board as the county commissioner chairperson. Growth needs to pay for itself. It used to, and what happened? 2008 happened, and we had a developer come and say, "I could hire more people if I didn't have to do impact fees." The water, my water bill is more than my electric bill. I don't understand, I'm a single person. It's not fair. It's just not fair. I'm excited that my house went up $66,000. I'm up to 300, yay! I have a choice, do I rent it out? Do I fix it up? I got those people texting me all day long, "Can I buy your house? Can I buy your house?" I was hoping for a hurricane, wipe me out, let me go. I spoke yesterday at a town hall. 301 is, got roots in it, this deep from the flea market south. I work in parish. I work by the Marathon Gas Station. I drive on that pretty 301, except for the little part by the bridge that I say bad words at when I go over it every day. But can we get on that MPO thing, 301 south? Help, help. I get off of it, and I go through the side roads, because I get tired of going boom, 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 boom. We need some help. We're the east side. I used to be the east side, but now I'm baloney. I'm in the middle. I'm Somerset, I'm Monico. I'm not the rich Lakewood Ranch, I'm not the rich parish. I'm one co. I was here first. I wasn't here first, but Bradenton was. But, you know, I've been around so long that I know the county commission lent the state $1 million to fast-track, state was 70 from four lanes to six lanes, which was very intelligent. But it took me 12 years to get my sidewalks. And I said, "Oh, there goes my sidewalk money." But 12 years it took me to get that sidewalk. And I know, I had a railroad tracks, and I had a bridge, and yada, yada, yada. But I'm Monico. I was trying to keep the kids safe. I was trying to keep my son safe. He wanted to go see a friend, and there was no sidewalks. And they let the Casey, which was awesome, she pushed the dirt back. And I go, "Casey, you pushed the dirt where we could walk." "Oh, I'm sorry, I'll clean it up." She striped the road. "Oh, thank you." I ran for county commissioner in 2006 because I got tired. And I told them, "I can replace any one of you, because I can move. I'll go anywhere. I'll replace one of you." And Ed Chance, back on that backboard, wanted to come back, and I go, "Oh, no, Ed, you can't come back." And I threw my hat and a ring, and Ed died. And then some people got, "Ooh, Carol Whitmore. Oh, let's put her." And Frank Brunner, and Dr. T. I learned a lot running for county commissioner, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on items number one or two on today's agenda? Yes, ma'am. First and last name, county of residence, you have three minutes on items one or two.
Hi, Carol Phelps. We already know that the move of the F dab and everything we're doing out in East County, you've had a lot of people, that this has brought a lot of awareness to exactly what those burdens are, when we're experiencing unprecedented growth. We have a lot of things in the works. We have not yet reviewed our impact fees, and we're talking about these other fees that are to accommodate growth, and, you know, don't kill the messenger. But we really had a pretty good idea up there that I hope you look at and focus on what we're supposed to be doing as conservatives, and that is conserving our money. So we've got impact fee study that we paid for, that we've not yet been able to review and implement. And we all know, we have to raise those impact fees. We all know it. And, you know, everybody knows it. So I don't think we should be afraid to do that, because I think that the people that are going to be impacted with an increase in impact fees understand that's part of what we have to do. So let's not be afraid to do that. Secondly, let's not be afraid to be conservatives and save our money. It's a great idea to review this FIF and plan for the future, because we know we are not just looking at what's going on past 675. We know you've all got plans to make Maiaqua the next greatest city, even if we want it or not. So let's be logical. Let's really demonstrate some conservative, fundamental fiscal principles. And that's making the most bang out of our buck. The second thing is that when we go into these things, you've got some really very interested people out there, that we'd like to see better presentations brought into the communities for how we could take part with these things, how we could have a voice in how our communities are formed. When we first started talking about moving the F dab, we had a town hall, and we got nothing. And we know what's going on. You know, you don't just have what the county's plans are. You're looking at multiple projects at the same time. And because of property owners' rights, we do have to look at each one of those cases individually. But it is myopic, and it is not common sense, and it is not good overall planning to look at those things not en masse in a group. So I think we could get a lot of support from your constituents for making decisions that are based on sound fiscal practices, not on personalities, not on other outside issues. So this is a good idea. You've got an impact fee plan. Do we want to throw that money away that we spent on that? Do we want to throw that money away that we spent on that? Because we paid a lot of money to a consultant to come up with our impact fee review. And this is not the first one. This is the second one that we've delayed. So let's save us some money and do things the right way.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on items number one or two on today's agenda? Items one or two? Okay. Seeing no one, we're going to go ahead and close public comment on items one and two and move on to development services. Mrs. Knapp, item number three is yours, which is presentation on comprehensive plan rewrite Commissioner Cruz, would you like to make a statement, sir?
It's not a statement. It was more of a question. I tried to, back months ago, do something with 2.1.2.8 because collectively this board seemed to agree that there was issues with it. I said, "Hey, let's just take it out for now and then fix it and put it back in." Everyone said no. Well, they said yes and then said no. And said, "We'll have a work session on it, and we can discuss 2.1.2.8 and try to fix it in a work session rather than remove it and give direction." And then I tried to schedule a work session and remove it, I don't know, a month ago it was after recess. And I was told, "No, don't worry about it. It's already scheduled. It's September 19th. There's going to be a work session on 2.1.2.8." And that appeased me because I was told there was the work session I'd been asking for. That was the work session? Like, the entirety of discussion of a major policy that was put into our comp plan that's already facilitated thousands upon thousands of homes and a million and a half square feet of commercial space east of the F dab? The entirety of the work session was eight slides, one of which said, "Any questions?" Relative exclusively to the FIF fees. And mind you, that's a very important component of the concern, but that was it. I mean, that's the work session that everyone's been waiting months and months and months to have about the entirety of 2.1.2. I was led under the impression that this was going to be a more substantial discussion on a policy. In fact, the very headline on the agenda says, "Presentation on Comprehensive Plan Policy 2.1.2.8 Development East of the Future Development Area Boundary." That's the entirety of the title of this, so I assume that meant something more substantial. I understood Evan's piece was a component of it. We had a separate briefing on it, but I thought there was going to be more to it. Was that it? We're now all happy with 2.1.2.8 based upon a nodding of the head to maybe bring back having a study on one component of it?
I assume you're addressing your rhetorical question.
It's a rhetorical question because if that was the entirety of the thing, and Nicole's standing there, so I can ask Ms. Knapp, is there an intention of having a more substantial work session relative to the policy as requested to have that work session? And everyone on this board seemingly agreeing to have a work session on this? This didn't seem like the intent of the request. And I'm not accusing you of it at all. I just want to get some clarification. Are we to expect a more substantial discussion on this policy at some point in time, or are we just ignoring the request for the work session?
Is there a desire by a majority of the board for such a work session? Would be the question. And I think Mrs. DePaul needs to step up and answer that.
Another work session? No, sir. However, when we do our FIF study, there will be significant work that goes into that, into the establishment and research. And so that would be, those findings would be coming back to the board for a vote.
But that wasn't the intent of the concern. The concern was both staff and this board, I know the board's now saying, "Well, we don't really need to have one," but there were numerous people on this board that expressed concern. There are two people on this board who have voted no. 100%, well, all but one, all but one time, voted no on every policy associated with 2.1.2.8 because they've expressed displeasure in that very policy and do not believe in that policy. Only one person on this entire board voted to transmit that policy initially. And multiple people on this board voted against transmitting that policy. So I thought we were going to have a bigger discussion on it, not just about FIF. Again, that's a major component. But we had discussion of, even two different staff reports said two different things relative to what constitutes your ability to develop east of the line. One of them said, "As long as the piece to the west of you is approved, then you can get approved yourself." Another staff report came and specifically said, "You can't build anything until all the roads and infrastructure is in place." So even staff has a misinterpretation and confusion about the nature of this policy. So I thought the work session was supposed to be to clarify the language, clean it up so that the developers who are looking to use it have a better handle on what they're allowed to do with the policy, as is the board being asked to approve things, have a better handle on what that policy is. And staff as a whole have a better understanding. When they claim that this conforms to the comp plan, they should know what the comp plan says that it's conforming to. So there was a lot of issues. It wasn't just FIF. And the board at one point agreed that this was, this was not well-written, and now we've put it in. We've used it a few times. We've realized the flaws in it. And now, like any good business or any good government or any good, just how you're supposed to conduct things, you say, "Okay, now we understand the flaws. Let's fix the flaws now that we have a case study on it." That's what I thought we were supposed to be doing with this supposed work session, not six to eight slides from Evan about one particular item of it, which I do appreciate that, those slides, and I do appreciate that topic. But I'm just asking, I was told we were going to have a work session. I was effectively promised a work session. When I tried to pull this out, everyone said, "Let's not pull it out. We'll have a work session on this instead." That was the direction given, but we're not having a work session on this. And now people are saying, "Well, we kind of got you not to pull this out by promising a work session, but now after the fact, we're not, we're promising." And you're saying it's going to come back, but it's going to come back in six months with six months of this policy being in place that can be utilized by anybody in its current format. And when it comes back, it's going to be specific to the FIF. It's not going to be talking about the road infrastructure. It's not going to be talking about whether or not you can build east of something because it's approved or east of something once roads are done. There's a lot more components to it. To say we're now going to have a full-on work session in March or April, that wasn't really the intent. I'm a little disappointed. I was promised that September 19th was going to have a work session on this policy, and we have not had a work session on this policy.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Turner, you're on the board next.
I'm confused after that long dissertation, but is there, are there specific things in the rewrite, if we bullet pointed, that there was concerns about? Secondly, as far as I'm concerned, the utilities part of it. Evan's piece is integral in us going beyond F dab. We have to get that, we have to get water and sewer resolved, and then a stage plan after that. But Ms. Knapp, I mean, is there, was there any specific instruction on rewrite? It's something specific, or is this, was it just a general? I mean, I'm just trying to respond to that.
Is the question, will the policy 2128 be addressed as part of the rewrite?
Was, no. Was there something specific in this, in this policy that you're instructed to rewrite?
Not as of yet. What we realized when staff met to discuss today, we realized that we needed the board to understand the impacts of where the biggest impacts are with the development east of the F dab. And then from there, we can bring forward with, simultaneously with Evan's study results, better address the proposed changes to the comp plan or code that would support that. The other thing would be that until then, we've discussed how we can provide a deeper analysis in the staff reports for developments that come forward east of the F dab to give you a better analysis in the breakdown of the A through G criteria, if you will.
So once we get that report back, could we be able to assess things better and see any flaws?
Correct. We can better align you.
And then for Evan, for Evan, do we have, are we clear for Evan if we're doing? No, you don't have to come up, Evan, that's good. Are we clear on whether we're doing a whole FIF or we're doing the partial? What are we requesting him to do?
If you're asking a question, he has to come forward to the microphone.
Yeah, and I can speak too, but I, he said it at the beginning, I believe, but I also know. So the main, the FIF study overall, the commissioners had, had given us direction not to proceed with a new FIF study. The existing one was done in 2019, and so technically, I mean, it's still valid. It's still, I mean, it's still, it's still updated. Well, it is not technically, it is, it's still updated. So his proposal was to do an FIF study for development east of the F dab specifically. That is the largest part of policy 2.1.2.8 that staff feels could, in the future, be a potential issue. So we do want to make sure that we address FIF for utility expansion as we move, you know, as development moves east.
Yeah, because we've got to get a handle on the expanse.
And if I could just add to that?
Yeah.
Since we, we're just in a work session, we haven't gotten any direction. We're going to be bringing this item back to the board during a regular meeting to get official direction, and we will carry forward whatever the board directs us to do, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden and then Commissioner Ballard.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so we can break this down at a level that everybody understands. So we need the FIF study first before we can move forward to be more accurate in our planning in regarding to policy 2.1, 2.1.2.8.
Correct. That's the consensus from staff, yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard.
Don't go too far, Nicole. So I do think that it's important that we take an approach that is based on evidence. I do want to see that FIF study and, and make sure that we're doing, that when, as this policy is implemented, it's done in a way that is smart and accounts for our future utility needs. So I don't like the idea of just, you know, ripping off the Band-Aid, taking it away until, until we get answers. I'd like to see that study and then move with, with potential changes from there. The other, the other question that I had for you was you mentioned going more into staff analysis of each point of 2.1.2.8 in, in, you know, future cases that we have come up. Can you explain a little bit more about how that's going to be different than, than what we've had thus far? And I guess, you know, whether, whether we're going to have a really solid idea from staff of, you know, what, what each of these parts of 2.1.2.8 mean?
If you recall in there, it says that the development has to be contiguous and coterminous. That's probably the, one of the easier things to understand perhaps, but it's not defined. So we'll try to do a better understanding of what that definition looks like and how we can justify that it is contiguous and coterminous by common definitions. And then there's other spots in there where it speaks to whether or not the timing of roads and other infrastructures. It just, we'll just do a better analysis of why we think this, this development at this time is appropriate because of the development that's preceding it to the west.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of our last meetings, we, this board, with the exception of two of us, denied a application or that came before us that was contiguous to an existing project. And we talked about, you know, what do we need to do to give the developers a better idea of how to move forward in 2128? And I thought this were kind of, I know we're talking about the FIF study and all that type of stuff, but we have developers still out there that are trying to develop property under, under the current plan that we need to give some direction to. So are you saying that every, if it's contiguous and everything meets all the rest of 2128, you guys are reviewing them individually and going through the process? And then are there other projects out there right now that are coming in that want to go beyond the F dab that are contiguous to an existing project? Because we had the one that was the lazy sea, we can talk about it, got denied. Don't know if we'll ever see it again, but it was contiguous to Foxbrook. And in my opinion, it met everything under 2.1, 2.128, along with Commissioner Ballard, and the rest of the board denied it. So I'm just trying to get a feeling for where we're going to be on 2128 because we're kind of like, I feel like we're kind of floating around this process. And I'm all for the study. I'm all for the report to get done. We need it. It has to get done. It'll help us with the rest of the comprehensive plan lift that we're going to do. But I feel that we're just kind of shortchanging some of these developers that are out there that are already in the process or were in the process, following 2128, and we denied them for a request that was, met every, in my opinion, met every part of 2128. So can you give me any idea of where we're going with this? I mean, you know, I was looking for some, some more answers to if we had to put teeth in it or whatever, pull teeth out or whatever, but I'm kind of confused because I don't think we need to pull 2128 out, but I think we were talked about how are you going to reshape this thing or remold this thing to where our development community had some idea of what they were, of what they could do after the last one was denied, so.
So we'll still accept the applications, just like any other application we take in, and we'll still present the facts to you. If you, if you recall, we don't really make a recommendation. We give you all the facts. So I can't guarantee that even if a project meets all of the A through G criteria from staff's position, some application could still be denied. But in the meantime, what we would like to do is, before we can get an LDC amendment, so like I said at the beginning, when you do a comp plan amendment and you create new policy, you're supposed to follow through with an LDC to, to the deeper analysis and requirements that support that policy. Because policy languages can be subjective and high, big picture. So the LDC is meant to drill down a little bit more. And we get into the specific definitions, like I said, and eligibility of timing and requirements. Until we can do that, all we can do is give you a better analysis from the directors and deputy directors that review these applications. And remember, there's also a criteria for a local development agreement.
Yep.
Well, we shouldn't be waiting until the local development agreement to make sure those items of criteria are addressed. We perhaps need to step back and make sure that's more in line, at least with discussions with the applicant, when we bring you the staff report for the actual plan amendment.
Well, I know 2128 should not even be in the comp plan. It should be in the land development code. Comprehensive plan is a living, organic organism that sets a vision for where we're going to go. The LDC tells us how we're going to get there. So I mean, we're going to go through this review and, and I know we're going to go for this lift, and I know every commissioner is going to have a different opinion in where that goes, but I can, I mean, that's, you know, I don't like the fact that this is even in the comprehensive plan.
So it's in the comprehensive plan. There's other language within the comprehensive plan that says that development should not continue east of the developed, future development boundary areas. So this was, I don't want to say an add-on, but, and again, it's not specific. It's not regulatory really in nature, so it speaks to big picture policy setting. So, but with the cleanup, we can, we would take 2128 and existing comp plan policies that in somewhat, I don't want to say contradict because 2128 then, and does, we clean it up, make it a little neater, we would do that. But that's why it's in there, because in, they would have had to strike, specifically strike the language that said that thou shall not develop east of the F dab.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we don't have anyone else on the board for discussion. Thank you very much, Mrs. Knapp. We'll move on then to item number three, which is comprehensive plan rewrite update. It is a development services item as well, so I assume we'll be hearing from Mrs. Knapp.
Yeah. Again, for the record, Nicole Knapp, interim director of development services. Item number three is an update to the comp plan rewrite. As you all may recall, we began the official project, kicked off May 1st. We held briefings with commissioners throughout most of May. We conducted a roundtable since then with the different liaisons from each of the different department and discipline areas to get their initial feedback of what they see on the day-to-day basis when they're reviewing projects, comprehensive plan policy changes or, or land development code, how it affects the land development code changes. We've held our initial kickoff of community engagement. We had a library series, if you recall, over, I think it was five evenings. And we're about ready to go live with, if we haven't today already, a webpage, on our webpage, it specifically involves the community in the rest of the remaining part of the schedule. I'm not going to go into details because I will shortchange it. I'll let Kelly Klepper, who's standing behind us, do that. We have a lot more work to do, but at this point in the project, we felt it was important to give you an update of where we've come thus far and then allow some discussion if you're inclined to do so. So I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Klepper. Kelly is with Kim Lee Horn, and he is the consultant. We're working under him and his team on this project.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kelly Klepper with Kim Lee Horn, and also a Manti County resident, as I always like to say as part of my discussions and presentations. So I do have a vested interest in how this community grows and develops. Been here 18 years and plan to basically retire here, although my wife will tell me I'm not allowed to retire. to retire. What we want to do, and that was a bad dad joke, sorry. What we want to do is, as Nicole said, is provide you a quick update on where we are, where we're going, and kind of where we are kind of thinking with some of the discussion items. So, if it's okay with you, I'd like to go through somewhat of a brief presentation. There is some information. We want to kind of stop and ask some questions along the way. We understand that there is no vote that can be taken today, but we do want to make sure that we are capturing comments and ideas from the board. As Nicole said, we had a very robust session with department heads, with key liaisons, with staff to kind of get an understanding of what works, what doesn't work, what could we be doing better as a community, especially from a comprehensive plan. You know, one of the things, and I actually have mentioned this when we had our community workshops of, how many people have actually looked at the comprehensive plan? Now, the interesting thing to say is, and I've kind of reformatted, this is your current comprehensive plan. It's over 1,500 goals, objectives, policies, and strategies. And one of the things you're going to hear me say towards the end of the discussion, the presentation is, you have way too much in that plan. And there's a reason. I'm going to justify that here in just a moment. So, I'm not sure if I've got control of this. Well, I guess I do. So, what are we doing as part of our assignment? As Nicole said, you know, we're looking at a soup to nuts, cover to cover review of the current comprehensive plan. So, we're doing an analysis, and that's basically where we are with those first two stages. The existing plan analysis, so we're going through every single element, all 13 elements. We're looking at not only the goals, objectives, policies, but we're also looking at the data that supports those policies and to provide an initial assessment. Our team of about 40 to 50 folks behind me are knee-deep in the reviews as we speak, and we're starting to kind of set up some of those additional follow-up meetings with various county staff to kind of say, hey, here's what we're finding, here's what we're seeing, and clarify to make sure we are seeing everything. As Nicole said, we started off with a, I'll say, our neighborhood engagement. So, we had a series of workshops, and we're going to talk through that, including some of those findings here in just a minute. And then what happens at the end of this initial process, and we'll actually be back before you a couple of times, is to say, this is, these are our findings. These are our recommendations from a couple of different perspectives, and those are going to start to inform and update the plan as we know it. And then, of course, coming back through the public hearing process, both through the planning commission as well as the Board of County Commissioners, including transmittal to the state for the update itself. So, we provided this as part of our initial discussion, especially with the workshops, to let everybody know where we are in a very simplified manner. We had our initial rollout to kind of introduce what the comprehensive plan is and isn't, and then we're going to go through the process. And then there's going to be a follow-up comprehensive plan outreach, very similar to what we did. I will say that we're going to shake things up a little bit with some of the locations to make sure that we are capturing some of those additional geographies that, you know, folks and residents had expressed a desire for us to come out to. A couple of things to remember, and I think this kind of goes to a couple of points that were made earlier this morning. With the comprehensive plan, and this is straight out of Florida statutes, it is not the land development code. It should not have those specific policies. It should be in the form of goals, objectives, policies, those guidances, those, the vision, what we want to do, how we want to do it, but the specific components. And I'll give you a great example of where this came into play. When we were revising and reviewing and revising the city of Venice's comprehensive plan, they actually had building heights, parking standards, and setbacks within their comprehensive plan. Now, we're not saying that that is the case here, but those are the exact kind of things that you do not want within a comprehensive plan. It actually created some legal challenges that we identified, and the city attorney agreed with as well. So, there again, this is intended to do the, I'll call it the deep dive, the understanding of what the vision and those policies, the code itself implements. So, what's being analyzed, everything that you can see on the screen here from traffic to water to wastewater. So, it's incredibly important that we do talk about the utility aspects of this. Stormwater, parks and rec, population, land use, you know, when you start to listen and see the amount of population growth that this community has undertaken over the last couple of years, one is probably not a shock to you all, but when, you know, when you start reading different things that are out there that, you know, the Sarasota, Manatee, or Braden and Sarasota, MSA is one of the top two to top 3% growth MSAs in the country, that starts to cause a little bit of pause. When we talk about an area that is approaching a million people between both Manatee and Sarasota counties, you start to say, okay, how are we addressing a lot of this? So, we had a series of workshops. As Nicole said, we did the library series. We went, we did five different venues. We did five different options. We also provided an online hybrid component to where people could listen in via Zoom. There was not a limitation on the number of people that could attend the Zoom. It was unlimited. We actually had one of our staff members who was sitting there online with folks that were, as they were asking questions, he's answering those questions in real time. So, literally, we had somebody dedicated to resolving and addressing comments that were being provided by the public as those were coming in, all of which is part of the public record that we're compiling. So, there again, we did have some workshops that were better attended than others. Rocky Bluff is one of those. I think Commissioner Satcher, you would agree that that's probably one of the more engaged areas of our community. But I will say we had some very good dialogue. We had a lot of considerations, a lot of concerns, a lot of people just talking about, this is what we're seeing, and how do we address some of this? Now, some of it, of course, is out of the county's hands, DOT or, you know, some of the other state and federal agencies. So, there's aspects of the comprehensive plan that, of course, cannot be addressed with some of the considerations that they had. So, we went through a number of exercises, and, you know, it may seem simple, but we said, so, if I'm coming to this community for the first time, how would you describe Manatee County in one word? That kind of starts to tax people's brain a little bit. Of course, we did have a couple of folks that tried to use four, five, and six one words to get a sentence out. But then we said, what would you like it to be in the next 20 years? There again, you may think that that's overly simplified, but from a planning perspective, we start to glean a couple of thoughts and ideas as far as what the community's thinking. You know, having done this for 31 years, there's a rhyme and reason to some of the discussions and some of the activities that we do. So, from a vision standpoint, we did the typical word cloud. What were those items that kind of came up over and over? So, you know, affordable, conservation, you know, right now, they're saying expensive, equitable, infill, and some of the other items. So, those, basically taking the words that were provided by the community as part of that, either in person or online, and creating that initial word cloud. So, we did a priority ranking, five baseline topics, whether it is housing, or transportation, or parks, and conservation, and those things, and said, what is the most important to you? And let people vote to say, you know, what kind of, what were some of the rankings that came out of that? And that was done for each of the areas that we did. So, all the results were done, both individually and then a combined component as well. And of course, we always have to have the mapping exercise. Where do you see issues? Where would you like to see certain things? Or what are the challenges that we're seeing? So, we had the county actually broken up into a series of five maps that covered the entire county, and individuals were asked to identify on the maps of the various items that they liked or didn't like, whether it was transportation, or where they would like to see a new park, or new conservation areas, or issues with transportation. There again, seems a little overly simplified to some, but there was a lot of information that we derive from these types of exercises, especially when you take it as the whole. So, what are the key takeaways? There was a lot of consideration and concern as far as protection of our natural resources, housing options and affordability. Commissioner Ballard, you know, you mentioned this morning with respect to affordable and workforce housing. That is a major consideration and concern from the community. Congestion. How many cars are going, you know, within and through this community every day? Retaining and expanding the parks and open spaces. You know, this is one of those things where we can build off of the countywide parks master plan that was done a couple of years ago and utilize those findings as well as the information we're seeing now to help better inform the comprehensive plan components. And then, you know, an overall consideration and concern with the amount of development and the amount of growth. Now, having been in this position that you all have, and I would not definitely say that I'm definitely not going to take that for granted because there is a lot going on, but, you know, we're not in the position of being able to shut down the border. You know, I-75, and I've made this comment a couple of times, I-75 and I-95 are pipelines from the north and the Midwest directly to our community. We have a lot of assets here. People want to be here. So, there again, you know, there is going to be the ongoing concern. Yeah, some of you were born and raised here. I've been here 18 years. We had folks coming up to us and said, you know, I moved into Manti County two weeks ago or last year. What does this plan do? What are we looking at? So, we had some really good comments, and of course, there was also the ever-popular comments of, it's too fast, too much, and we need to better plan for it. So, as Courtney said, Courtney, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here staring at Mr. Poll. As Nicole said, we are going live with an online survey. As of noon today, we will be flipping a switch, and the online survey portion of this initial outreach will be going on. This is basically a snapshot of the screen, not the actual one that we're rolling out, but just to kind of give you a quick understanding of what it is. It's called public coordinate. And basically what it is, it's a mapping exercise. It's based off of Google Maps, so you can zoom in, zoom around, fly through the county, drop pins, provide comments, even upload comments, or ideas, or concerns, or considerations, and also be able to answer a series of questions, or even provide photos as part of this. This survey is going to be open for three weeks. This is also intended to provide or obtain those initial comments to help kind of inform the review that we're doing. At the end of this process, when we start to, I'll say, refine, we will be going back out with the online survey. So, there is a link that is being provided through the county's website, and we've been working with staff, especially public information and some of the other groups to make sure we're blasting this out on the county's social media so that we can get, like I said, a series of comments over this three-week period. Just a couple of other things, and I'm going to take a brief moment here in just a second, but, you know, there's a series of questions. There's opportunities. It's not just drop and go, but it's very intuitive when you start to look at it. We've been working on this for some time. Oops. So, this was the information that we've always provided so that as residents have specific questions, they can contact Bill O'Shea. Bill is the county's project manager and direct link working with us moving forward. So, having said that, I wanted to take a very, very quick break and to see were there any comments from the public outreach components or concerns or considerations that we need to take back to the team.
Commissioner Ron. Commissioner Ballard, after him, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your continued work and the presentation on this. The comp plan is a vision for where we're going to be in 10, or 15, or 20, or 30 years. And along with that, you know, there's land use regulations and the nexus between communities' future and vision and regulation of private property, regulations on private property. Being that we haven't reviewed this comprehensive plan in 30 years, I mean, there are probably some people in this room that were like, five or six 30 years ago, except for Carol Ann Felsh. She's a little older. But, you know, you're about 32. So, but the question is, is that, one, the comprehensive plan should be the vision for Manti County. Like I said, the land development code is how we move forward in building out Manti County. How often do you think, in your estimation as the expert, would you say that we should be reviewing a comprehensive plan?
And actually, I want to dive into some of those specifics on the comprehensive plan here in just a moment, Commissioner. But just to be able to answer your question, the state mandates that you have to take a look at at least once every seven years is through the evaluation and appraisal process, which is a little different than what it used to be when it was the Department of Community Affairs. However, as a, you know, practicing planner for over 30 years, my idea is, one, you should never not keep looking at the comprehensive plan. Major overhauls and updates, you need to be looking at this almost like on an annual basis because there are things that change. We had COVID. We had ARPA funds. We've had this. We've had Ian. We've had a number of other things. So, you know, even if it's just a quick check-in of how's the comp plan doing, you should be, in my opinion, you should be looking at that as a group at least once a year. Formal updates every five to seven years, absolutely.
And also the rapid population growth that's been taking place here in Manti County. So, would that something we would want to put in the land development code or the comprehensive plan that future boards should have some, or is that just something we just take on our own and say, hey, let's look at the comp plan or whatever? Because, I mean, in the past, 30 years is a long time after you look at your comprehensive plan and just keep shoving text amendments into it, and then it goes from this to this. So, is there something we should put in the comprehensive plan saying, future boards, you need to, you know, review this on an annual basis and then hard look every five to seven years? Or is that a best practice? Or is it just, hey, you know, roll the dice and go?
So, you know, there again, the state says thou shall look at it, and your staff is going to do their initial assessment as part of that to say, hey, we're good, or we think we need to do a couple of things. And then that kind of triggers a one-year update and review. There's nothing that you need to put in, of course, definitely not in your land development code, but into the comprehensive plan that says, hey, every five years, we shall do this. It's a board policy discussion. It's a recommendation from us that you do that deep dive. You know, the fact that the comprehensive plan has been reviewed over the 30 years. Has it been a very, very deep dive? Not so much. Is it definitely time to do that deep dive with 1,500 policies? Absolutely. And some of the things you're going to see me talk about here towards the end of the presentation, it's probably going to be the, well, yeah, we could have told you that, Kelly.
Well, yeah. I mean, because we have things out of that conflict that could open us up for litigation and different things like that. So, that's why I'm just kind of figuring out what we need to do for future boards. We all won't be here probably then or whatever. But there just seems to be some steps that need to be taken to where there is a deep dive into this because we are the keepers of the vision. We're the keepers of the plan, and staff does what we ask them to do. So, that's why I was asking the question about putting something in the comprehensive plan that says, you know, hey, this is what you got, you know, going forward because other boards didn't do that, and we're sitting here today doing a deep dive 30 years later, in my opinion. But that's just my opinion.
And there again, I'm going to get into some of the more initial findings here in just a moment. So, don't think that this was the end of the presentation. I've got some more things there again to come up here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard, back to you, ma'am.
So, I'm not going to get into anything substantive, but I just wanted to thank you for involving the public at every step of the way and for, you know, even at these very initial discussions, making sure that we're having all of this public outreach in many different forms so that people around the county can feel confident that they have, that they have a voice in this as we move forward. My question really is, how are we going to continue that momentum as we move the process along?
Great question, Commissioner Ballard. And so, here's the first thing I'll say is, one, you've got an incredible PIO. You've got a great resource in your website. So, as we're doing updates, as we're coming back before the board with updates and information, one, today's presentation is going on the website. The presentations that we did with the community workshops going on the website. That information is being pushed out on social media as well as, like I said, let's say, just being on the website itself. Part of this is going to be word of mouth. Part of this is staying engaged with the civic associations to say, hey, this is not a one-and-done. And that's the reason we were very clear in our presentation to say, this is not the one time that you get a chance. We're going to be coming back before the board at these key steps. We're going to be coming back before you all as a community in about eight to nine months. So, part of it there again is how much we can push it out through the social media, how much we can get the positive press on this as well. And then there again, just making sure that there's effective updates and regular updates on the county's website.
Thank you, ma'am. We don't have anyone else on the board for discussion at this time.
If I could, with your indulgence, can I?
Continue on, sir.
Sure. So, let's talk about the land use and the population very quickly. Here's one of those duh moments. So, when we start looking at what our population is anticipated to bring over the next five, 10, 20 years, and this is not just permanent, this is also the seasonal, we're talking about 120,000 more people over the next 10 to 20 years. Some people may say that's conservative. Some people may go, that's a little aggressive. Just looking at the numbers of those folks that are still coming to this state on a daily basis and in this community, we believe we're pretty good, especially looking at the census and kind of comparing that back against the state with the Bureau of Economic and Business Research. So, we could be a community of over half a million sooner rather than later, and we're having to address those types of growth, and especially when you start talking about your FIF and roadways and transportation. We're looking at those numbers to make sure that there is adequate capacity for water, wastewater, solid waste, transportation, parks, and all of the above.
Sure. Okay. Before we go on to the next slide, Commissioner Bearden.
No, I just, this is a very important slide that everybody needs to look at because a lot of people think us creating more government subsidies for affordable housing is the answer to our current situation. But what we're currently dealing with is an economic issue. We're currently dealing with supply and demand issues, right, that not only affect the price of homes going up, but also affect the small businesses that are out there, the hourly wages that we're going to have to, small businesses are going to have to pay their employees. So, this stop the growth, stop the building is not the answer to our current situation today. If we stop, then our economy stops, and it affects everybody, and it affects everything. So, that's why this slide right here is so important because we have to find equilibrium. And I know that there's studies that are going out there right now to help find what equilibrium is. That's how we That's how we figure out to drive the, to lower the cost of our average price of a home. So I just wanted to stop and look at this and digest this particular slide here because I think it's very important to see what's going on in our local economy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, thank you. And continue.
So, of course, we're going to be looking at the future land use. We're not only looking at what we can do, but also what we could be doing as a matter of fact right now, looking at both what's on the ground today versus what do we need to be looking at 20 years from now. Of course, the discussion on 2128 is going to be critical in some of this and it's going to help answer some of the questions. But we're going to be relooking, as we've all talked about, at the densities and the intensities, the definitions for mixed use, those, the nodes, components, looking at some of those other areas and how those definitions are technically being applied. And we're asking the tough questions now of staff. So when we say future land use, it's not just, hey, we're going to keep the map to pretty colors and keep moving forward, but we're really looking at how do we best accommodate the amount of growth. Understanding and the realization is that not every piece of property that we show on the map is available for development, to the contrary. Having been in this business for the better part of my life, understanding that not all properties are created equal, not all pieces of property are available for development. So there has to be that balancing act moving forward. So the question we always like to ask is, does the county have sufficient land to accommodate projected growth? Easy answer is to say yes, but with an asterisk. So the question, and you may be looking and say, well, how do you come, how do you derive to that answer? It's what are we doing within the urban corridor? What are we doing? Because we know we did look at the southwest Tiff area and those urban corridors to see, is there a better way of doing things in that corridor? You know, if we start looking at some of these other policies that we have and some of the other geographic areas and some of the other things, we do and can manage the growth that we have. But there has to be that concerted study as far as the infrastructure, as far as the roads are concerned, and more importantly, water and wastewater. You know, I make the bad dad joke again about, I go to turn the faucet on, I'd like to be able to get water, and when I turn on the dishwasher, where's the dirty water going? Then we want to make sure that the county has sufficient capacity for me and my family and all, you know, 500,000 people to be able to turn on a faucet and flush a toilet. It's overly simplification of it, but there again, understanding where does that fall and how does that come about as part of this discussion? Transportation, you know, transportation isn't all just about the roads, it's about a number of different things. So we're looking at the vehicles. How are people going from point A to point B and everything in between? How do they get there? Cars, transit, bikes, sidewalks, so pedestrianism. So we're looking at the level of service standards, we're looking at the analysis for both the existing and the committed funding for future projects. What does that do to the transportation network? What are we doing from a mobility side of things? All forms of travel and transportation. So that is another thing that our transportation engineers are currently knee-deep in with running a series of models based off of the growth and development and also starting to coordinate with county staff. So of course, what we're going to be looking at from our component is a series of analyses and models, both looking at the existing conditions and then working with Mr. Davis and the team over there as far as the five-year horizons as well as the long-term horizons. There again, we're looking at 2045. Part of that discussion is that we need to be thinking that far out on roadways, networks, and also mobility options. So what are some of the future conditions that we're also looking at? There again, we've kind of talked about that, but also this is going to help inform some of your capital improvements moving forward as well. So what is the current plan analysis? So a couple of things that we do is, the first thing is, we take a look at the Florida statutes that have been adopted since, I'll say, and we pick a period of time. Even though the staff has already kind of gone through and done this exercise back in 2017 or 2019, we do a back check to say, okay, what are those items that the state passed in, we'll say, 2015? And have those effectively been addressed or, and how are they being addressed within the current comprehensive plan? Now, of course, there's a number of items that are coming up this last legislative session that we have to make sure are being addressed as part of our assessment. And we know that there's going to be legislative changes that come up before this plan gets adopted, so we'll have to be able to pivot moving forward. So what are some of those? Of course, you know, the state has changed terminologies a number of times. It seems like every year there's a new definition or new term for something. So we need to make sure that the county's comprehensive plan is addressing that. Live local, it's a big item. I was at the recent state planning conference a couple of weeks ago and believe it or not, I had two different attorneys I was talking to from the same firm but in different geographies provide me different interpretations on the application of live local, especially with respect to the coastal high hazard. So we understand that there is a lot of still uncertainty as it relates to that specific item. And we hope that there's a glitch bill or something that gets resolved as part of that. You know, the governor and the legislature undertook natural emergencies and there's items on there regarding land use and development regulations that was done as part of Senate Bill 1604. There again, we go through, we pull the list of all of the items that the state has kind of put out on the websites and their information to say what's going on. So there is a column in our initial matrix that says, yes, no, or no. The other thing that we start to do is our subject matter experts. We go through every element, we go through every line item. I can tell you for a fact that I read the entire comprehensive plan. I can tell you for a fact I've gone through the future land use element. It took me the better part of a day and a half sitting down and going through to, one, understand and start making some comments, but also starting to kind of pull together some of those comments from my team. So that's one of those things that our team is doing as we speak. Our utilities group that's been working with the county on plant expansions and all that, they're currently working with your county infrastructure components to also look at what's going on from a water supply plan. What about those future things, items, so that, you know, from a plant perspective, those items are being addressed? So what were some of those initial findings that we're starting to see in some of these initial reviews? Consistency in the terms. And it's just like anything else, and Commissioner Ron, I'm going to kind of pick on you for a second, you know, as we've band-aided the plan over the course of time, we have flip-flopped between Land Development Code, code, ordinance, regulations, and you start to see exactly when some of those things came about. Specific dates, there's some dates that are currently in the comprehensive plan that say by 2020, you will complete this. So the first question we always ask is, have you completed it? Yes or no? Simple question. Two is, is it still a priority? And three, if it is, what's the new timeframe? If it has been completed, let's acknowledge it, let's celebrate it. The last one is something that we've noticed a couple of different times. And, you know, I challenged my staff and I said, how many times can you find an objective or a policy dealing with farmworker housing? Four, different portions of just the future land use element, two of which actually say something a little different. So you can start to see, and it's like, one, do you need four sets of policies or sets of objectives dealing with farmworker housing? Do you need the, I'll say, the redundancy and compatibility and how we define that and how it's being applied within districts and designations? No. So what we've seen is between that with parks and recreation or recreation component as well as transportation is that there's a lot of redundancy and in some cases, it conflicts with other policies if you're not careful, especially on a more liberal interpretation. So those are the items that we are identifying as part of our review that for staff to be able to say, there again, yes, we agree and here's how we think we can apply it better from our perspective. So at this point, I wanted to make sure there again, now that we've kind of gone through the public outreach component and the initial review and discussion, you know, what are some of those additional considerations that the board has that, you know, we need to make sure we're taking into consideration moving forward? And let me clarify one thing before you all start to make some comments. This is not a knock on staff by any means. This is, you've got a very dedicated staff looking at a lot of different things and trying to take care of a bunch of things. Some cases, they just don't have time to do what we're doing right now for you. So to the contrary, I want to make sure that everybody knows, you've got a very, very, very good staff.
Staff who's suffering.
I'm sorry?
Who's suffering, you go ahead.
Yes, sir.
So it's 10:29. Commissioners, do you want to take, there's no one on the board, but do we want to take a break, come back and finish this or do we want to, do we think we're almost done? Do we want to push through and complete it? Looking for some feedback here.
I don't have a vote.
I have one vote for push-through.
I have no strong preference.
Okay, we're going to carry on then. All right, Commissioner Ballard is on the board. Go ahead, ma'am.
So I think that we're moving in a good direction. And Kelly, when we had our initial discussion, one of, a couple of things are important to my district specifically. And one of those things is the smart increase of density in kind of selected corridors. Because obviously, my entire district doesn't want to be extremely, extremely dense with high rises, et cetera, but we do, we need, we do need to work on increasing some density in some of those urban core areas so that we're not dealing with quite as many cars on the road making long trips, so that we're not dealing with quite as much sprawl, so that we can hopefully get a handle on some of the affordability issues. And I think all of, I think that density in those selected corridors does make a lot of sense and does work towards solving some of those issues. So that's specifically important to District 2. Another issue that I had, I believe I had brought up when we had talked about before, was trying to look at some historic areas or preservation of small cohesive neighborhoods where it really makes sense to make sure that as we grow, we're retaining our quality of life, the charm, the things that people love about Manatee County, and just making sure that, that we have a recognition of some of those special areas as we move on. Those were the two things that I think I wanted to bring up initially and that are, I think, particularly relevant to District 2 because District 2 really does have a lot of the, those really, the most historic areas in Manatee County.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. All right, we don't have anyone else on the board at this time. That concludes your presentation, sir.
Yes, sir, and as always, we appreciate the opportunity. We will be continuing to move forward and we'll be back before you with updates as we're continuing to progress.
Okay. Don't go too far, I'm going to open this item up to public comment and then we may have commissioners on the board after that. We're going to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the board on item number three, the one we just held, which is Presentation of the Comprehensive Plan Rewrite Update? So when you reach the microphone, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Mr. Ron, I'm going to get you for that. Carol Phelps. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I kind of was here when we did the last comprehensive plan, which probably got my interest in this because I had a job transfer where I'm in St. Petersburg and I was living on Inner Arity Island up in Escambia County and at the back gate of NAS. And I'll tell you, we had no zoning up there. There was no restrictions on pretty much anything. And so when I came down here, that was pretty much the, and we decided to settle in Bradenton versus St. Pete. And you know what? There weren't any new houses and I had just finished building a house in Inner Arity Point. And so I was very interested in that comprehensive plan that was coming up in this county because I wanted to look at what was this going to be like in a few years in a place where I planned on raising my children. So, yeah, I've been around with that for a while and that one took a lot longer to put together and I've asked some questions as far as our expediency in doing this because as I recall, that was almost a one-year process just for this type of work. So I realize with the advances we've made in technology anymore and things like that, this might be a little faster than how long it took 30 years ago, but it's still important that we're as scrutinizing these things we're doing, even more so, even though we're doing it bigger and faster. I think the best thing, I want to thank Kimley Horn and the Manatee County staff. I think in these workshops, they took a lot of the brunt of things that weren't within their realm, but they handled it great and we really appreciate all those workshops. But we really need to make a better effort at communicating what's available out there for people to take advantage of. And with the programs that they're putting online and things like that, you know, people have a voice, but they have to use it, you know? Half the game is showing up. If we could put the slide back on, I have it here, but if we could put the slide back on of those bullet points, you know, there are bullet points of your summaries, can we do that? Anyway, what I wanted to say about that is those are the things that, as I said, these staff members and these consultants, they took a lot in these meetings of what people wanted to say to you guys. So they kind of get some credit for that, but look what they came up with. And we no longer have to attract people to Florida, okay? And it's not what you've done, what we've done in the past, we owe all this to one person and his name is Mr. Carrier of Carrier Air Conditioning, okay? And people are always going to come to Florida, but
Thank you, ma'am.
If we bring everybody here, then the rest of the country becomes blue and we have one red state. So think of that.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on item number three on today's agenda? Yes, ma'am. So same as last time, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on item number three.
Stella Burnett, Manatee County. I don't know, was anybody here in 2008? I know you were. Mr. Bearden, were you? 2008, we crashed. My son wants me to come to Texas, they're crashing. The interest rate just like, I work for CPA in parish, Elington Parish, and two years ago, oh my God, I was working 80 hours a week. This past season, we hired somebody, but the new people slowed down a tad. So it's slowing down a little bit with 7% interest. We still have people. The idea thing is to have a New York teacher pension and come down here and pay cash for your house. People get outbid, but we have to have workers. We have to have people that can take care of them, people, people that can clean the houses, people that can afford to be here. We need affordable housing. I have a HUD house duplex next door, I have a house with a duplex next door to me. She's had that HUD duplex for 30 years. She now has her married daughter, a son, a baby or son-in-law, baby, and a nephew, all living for free in her HUD house. I'm furious, but we need affordable housing. I had a duplex, I bought a duplex to get rid of my daughter out of my house. She got a house on her own while her dad helped her. I had 50 phone calls to rent that duplex. I sold it, I got out of it. They're building new down the street. I sold it for $100,000 cheaper than I probably could have just because I sold it on my own. I didn't know any better, I just wanted out. We need affordable housing and we need schools, we need, well, you know, we need growth to pay for itself. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at this time to address the board on item number three on today's agenda? All right, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. And I'll just go to the board and ask, there's no one on the board now, but is there anyone who would like to make any final statements before we close out the workshop? Okay, hearing none, we're adjourned.